Some stuff.
Oh, mine was the most.
You're curious.
Kind of take a picture.
That's still there.
Oh.
Okay, be a picture.
Yeah.
Well, it's got to here.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
It's really great.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're all set for Friday one.
Okay.
Thanks.
Friday one.
This is more time about eight, nine?
He's got one.
On a night party?
Nine.
Right.
One.
Alright.
Group of ours.
Oh.
Hello.
Here.
That's your voice.
I'm trying to make it.
You guys did make it. What? I thought you were just.
I would, I would give that to the other people. Some of that.
Oh.
Something.
Yes.
Well, you guys.
George.
To the next.
No, it's Frank's birthday.
Oh, yeah.
And just George. So some of the.
Yeah.
Well, he's one of the four.
He helped with.
We didn't have to. So I'm. I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm.
Okay.
I don't.
I'm.
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 It's fine.
Wow.
You're still.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's just.
I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's.
It's.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm alive.
Yeah.
Well, please.
I just fixed it.
I love it.
It's funny.
I'm.
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 Already.
I'm.
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 Hi.
You guys.
Just pushing tags.
To the.
I'm.
Good for that.
I'm trying to provide.
All right.
After that was on.
Second.
I'm.
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 Yeah.
I'm.
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 About that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Geez.
So.
Oh.
For.
I'm.
Yeah.
I'm.
Yeah.
It's.
Um.
Page sixty-one, the.
It says, there's a public saying.
Uh.
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 These are challenges.
Uh.
The public hearing will be held.
Yeah.
Fifty-nine.
Now, page sixty-one is.
The.
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 Resolution.
Forty-seven thirty-nine.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
And looking for.
We're.
Yes.
It is on.
Yeah.
And it's.
Page sixty-one. For. Uh, resolution level G. Forty-seven thirty-nine.
Mine.
I thought it was.
Oh.
I don't. I didn't notice until my second reading tonight.
It says. I'll get to.
So.
I'm.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
It's.
It's.
Oh.
It's.
It's.
More like.
We need.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
No, but it has a public notice. Pass to the.
Yeah.
On page sixty-one.
My.
Resolutions.
Correct.
Six.
Seeing commits.
In.
While.
Sixty.
It's.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't.
Come to public notice now.
This.
This is a reaffirmation of.
Probably when.
Why.
Is it?
What we say.
Last week.
Maybe we got, uh.
Maybe we got wrong with that.
Public hearing.
But.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Just.
Just.
Want to do it. All right.
Most of them are. Yep.
In this meeting of Livingston. What are we? Livingston City Commission is called order. Maybe have roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
I'm here.
Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Saber.
Present.
Thank you very much. But we'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Well, I was. We pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, our first order of business tonight are. Our consent items. Is there a motion from the commission? Regarding our consent items. Chair and chair make a motion. We, uh, approve it. Consider it. Z. C. All right. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Freeman, a second by Commissioner Schwartz. Okay, we have roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner.
For.
Motion passes.
Tonight, there's no proclamations. There are no scheduled public comment. No public hearings. Nor ordinances. However, we do have several rel- resolutions. And, uh. If the commission has taken note. Resolutions A to F. Are actually resolutions just moving the, uh. Action. Or the item to public hearing at the next meeting. Okay.
Looking to put them together or?
No, no, we shouldn't put them together. I was just mentioning the. For.
Make sure.
Uh, this is not a final vote. We're just moving up to the public hearing.
Okay.
Go.
Good.
Okay. So our first resolution is resolution number forty-seven thirty-four. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Of its intent to increase the water rate in the amount of two percent. Become effective for July two, two thousand seventeen. Water uses. Water usage bill in August. Mr. Woodall? Have any comments on that?
I answered questions. Uh, with this two percent rate is within the preliminary budget, which would be with a later resolution. And it is superseding the future public hearing.
All right. Very much. Is there any motion from the commission?
I make a motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty-four. I'll second that.
Well, there's a motion by Commissioner Freeman, a second by Commissioner Sandberg. I mean, Commissioner Schwartz, excuse me. Is there any commission discussion? Comments or clarification? Is there any public comment? Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Sandberg.
Against.
Motion passes. All right. Uh, next resolution is resolution number forty-seven thirty-five. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Of its intent to increase the sewer rate in the amount of two percent become effective for July two thousand seventeen. Water usage bill in August. Is there a motion from the commission?
Make a motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a commission discussion? Is there a public comment? Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner.
Sandberg. Against.
Motion passes. Resolution number forty-seven thirty-six. A resolution of the city commission of the city. Of Livingston, Montana, estimating the cost of maintaining and improving streets and alleys in furtherance of the five-year capital improvement plan for street maintenance district number one. For fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. In the estimated amount of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred thirty dollars, which is a one percent increase on the prior fiscal year. And it's. And of. Its intent to levy and assess a hundred percent of the estimated cost against every parcel. Of property within said district for that part of the cost, which is assessable. Area bears to the assessable area of the district and calling for public hearing. Is there a motion from the commission?
I made the motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty-six.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there a commission discussion? Are there public comments? Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Sandberg.
For.
Motion passes. Resolution number forty-seven thirty-seven. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Of its intent to estimate the cost of maintaining lights and supplying electrical current. To special improvement lighting district. Number twenty, in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and levying and assessing a hundred percent of the estimated cost against every parcel of property within said district. For that part of the cost, which is assessable. Area bears to the assessable area of the district. Is there a motion from the commission?
I make a motion.
I make a motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty-six.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there a commission discussion? Commissioner Sandberg.
Thank you. Uh, I can't remember. I know we discussed this at the budget meeting. It's been a while. Um. What was the amount last year that we assessed?
This is unchanged from prior year.
Unchanged.
And here's two.
Okay. Thank you. And the, um. District twenty?
The entire city. Man, that number. It's only like. It encompasses the entire city.
Okay. So this is just for maintaining and. Do you know?
Yes. The question was, uh, how? What the area of what the district was? And there's only one light district in the city. And it encompasses all city properties.
Okay. And so the difference between this, um. Resolution and the next one is this one deals with the maintenance. And the next one deals with?
Other way. This one's power.
Yeah.
This is the power.
Yeah. The next one's a hardcore.
Okay. I'm just confused because the resolution does say maintaining lights. And supplying power. But. This one is specifically just supplying the power. And the other one is for maintaining lights. Thank you. And that one.
Um. Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Um. Sarah here, yeah. Yeah, it says maintaining and the electricity. The second one is specifically replacing. Replacing them. Replacing.
Yeah. Improvement. Yeah. So just replacing.
Uh, yes, Mr. Woodall. The statutory language is say law.
Oh.
Maintaining is keeping the lights on.
Gotcha.
All right. Thank you. Is there?
I'm good. How are you?
You're good. Any other comments? Any public comment? All right. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner.
For.
For. Motion passes. Resolution number forty-seven thirty-eight. A resolution of the city. Commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. With its intent to modify special improvement lighting district number twenty. By replacing street lights and other. Apparent senses. Apparent senses. Their end and to levy and assess a hundred percent of the estimated cost of ninety-one thousand, one hundred twenty dollars for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, against every parcel of property within said district. For that part of the cost, which is assessable area, there it bears to the assessable area of the district and calling for a public hearing. Is there a motion from the commission?
I make a motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty. I will second forty-seven thirty-eight.
Well, there's a motion by Commissioner Freeman. Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Commission discussion, questions, clarification. Is there any public comment? Here we have roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner.
For.
For. Motion passes. Next resolution is resolution number forty-seven thirty-three. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Giving notice that the city commission has completed its preliminary budget. In the amount of seventeen million, five hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars for fiscal year beginning on July first, two thousand seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. That the budget is on file and available for the public inspection. And on the internet at. WWW dot LivingstonMontana dot org. And calling for a public hearing for approval of the final budget and making appropriations. Is there a motion on resolution forty-seven thirty-three?
Make a motion to pass resolution forty-seven thirty-three. I will second that.
Okay. All right. Commission discussion. Comments, clarification. Commissioner Sandberg.
Um. I don't know, um, Mike's not here, but. Did we ever receive the, uh. What the proposed impact to a taxpayer with that analysis?
For the budget? Entire budget?
For the general fund. The general fund.
Sorry, talking about the mill value?
Well, we discussed the mills and then afterwards, um. You and I and, um, Mr. Cardes were discussing. Um, being able to see the impact to a property owner based on a certain value of a home. So we knew what the dollars were. And I'm just.
Yeah, I never saw that.
We haven't seen that yet?
No.
Okay. Um, the other question I had is in the resolution notice on page fifty-eight. Um. The notice of budget increase from property taxes of six percent. What? Six percent? What? Does that six percent apply to? What people are paying? Um. Not sure what that refers to.
Yes. Um, Mr. Woodall?
Yes. And is there? She could answer all for us?
Thank you very much.
That is the overall increase of the budget from the previous year. So actual appropriations. So the budget is at seventeen million, six percent more. Right? And that would include all capital expenditures that are high on the share. Okay. So that doesn't necessarily mean people's property taxes have gone up six percent.
Correct.
Because we don't know what the mill value is.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. There's a, um. Jay? I'd be curious at some point. That language should be changed a little bit. I think it's misleading.
What do you think it should be changed to?
Um, that the budget is increased, um, by six percent. But that doesn't. Not all of our revenue is property tax. So it wouldn't necessarily equate to a six percent increase in tax. So I think it's misleading. I don't know. If you had a thought or?
I guess I have to look at it.
Okay.
More. Top of page, top of line.
Yeah. I have my only two questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? The only, um, addendum I put next to that request would be if there's a statutory requirement of how, um, a budget is stated. Depending on the state statutes. So any public comment? Okay. All right. We do have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Sandberg.
Against.
Motion passes. Okay. For our next resolution. So that takes care of all the resolutions that are just moving to the public hearing for next meeting. Slash resolution. A resolution. Uh. Final reading, even though in the. Packet does have a. Page four, um. That states public notice that's actually incorrect for this meeting. On this particular resolution. So we have resolution number forty-seven thirty-nine. A resolution, the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Of its intent to commit a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer department fund to be used in the construction of a water. Water completion facility. Mr. Woodall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. This. As you stated, excuse me, is advertised as an intent. Uh. The body of the, of the title states is the city's intent to commit. Uh, it's got sort of a few lines up. The, uh, this resolution will actually. State to the T sub grant program that we have legislated into the intent to spend at least that amount on this project. And again. That was in the grant application itself, so it's just a restatement of that fact.
Okay. Right. Is there a motion from the commission?
I make a motion to, uh. To approve resolution forty-seven thirty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mission discussion. Commissioner Sandberg?
So that was already determined that we were going to allocate these funds, um, to a capital project, like we do any other capital project. Why do we have to have a resolution?
Because the grant program is very specific about paperwork that they require. They need separate resolutions stating.
Okay. So a letter from the commission is not suffice. They want an actual resolution.
Yes.
Do we? Okay. Is that something that we'll see every year then?
Every year we deal with. Yes.
Okay. And what do we get back from them for this then?
Uh, this grant is six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have our mission discussion. Is there any public comment? Okay. Roll call.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Sandberg.
For.
Motion passes. That takes care of our resolutions for this evening. Uh, our first action item is discuss the proof of deny. Whether to remove resolution number forty-six, forty-two from the table. And bring it back as a resolution of intent at the next meeting. Mr. Woodall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. This application was actually first looked at by the city commission in March of last year. Uh. The minutes are attached from that meeting. And the days are in stage until the next meeting.
Yeah.
And they did not come back. Uh, the request has been renewed considering it's already on the table. Uh, proper. Uh, action would be moved from the table. Moving forward to this, to a public hearing and closing.
So. Is there a motion on this discussion item? At this point, or would you rather have discussion first and determine whether or not a motion?
Okay. And I'd like to seek clarification on protocol with my name.
Okay.
Um.
Commissioner Sander.
So, I remember the discussion, so we tabled it, which it never came back. Um, so is that not an action in itself?
Yeah, it isn't an action in itself. I guess if we had a request, we did, we have a new letter stating that they're still interested in the act, so. If you, if you wish to allow this to move forward, I believe it would be proper to move it from the table since you've already addressed it once.
Okay, but if the commission doesn't want to address it, we just may not. So, if we. I was trying to understand, um, the protocols for we occurrences of the same issue multiple times, and so I realized that everyone has the opportunity to, provide a request to the city. Using the example of our zoning change, they can't do it more than once every twelve months. Is there anything similar in these type of requests that we have that, um, a person can only approach the commission so many times, or?
And that would be suggested for the Florida street vacation now.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious on that. Yeah, I guess I have to, anyway. So, the only way then a commission could vote yea or nay on this would be to bring it back as a topic of discussion for the next meeting. Okay, thank you.
If you read forty-six, forty-two, we don't have access to it as a public. Okay. Resolution forty-six, forty-two, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to discontinue the alley in the G block of the Riverside addition to the city of Livingston, Montana. If you could get the map up on the screen, then you'd be able to see where that is located. Red arrow is pointing to it, and, um, I believe that that is coming off of Lewis Street. You can see, if you can read upside down, and heading off into the county, that's the county line that goes up and down.
Mr. Chair, it's the very last block of East Lewis Street immediately across, um, the little creek bend that is called the Sack Bend.
That's the one you can see from there, right?
Sure.
That you can see from there, right?
Yes.
Only question I have is, did anyone go back to listen to the minutes and try to figure out, um, the reasons it was tabled?
Well, if I remember correctly, the petition didn't show up.
I'm not sure that was, is it here again, that there was one, at least one neighbor there just being in opposition? Uh, it was a county resident, you know, the person adjacent to that.
Oh, okay, now that went great, yeah. It wasn't here ago, it was, yeah.
I don't, uh, it would be nice to know exactly what, what it was tabled, the reasons it was tabled for. Probably the only way we can determine that is by listening to the recording from that meeting. Mr. Commissioner Freeman, you're the original one who made the motion. You don't have to remember what, what the enablement. It was in March of last year?
Yes.
So, that's only fifteen months ago. You guys don't remember that.
I, I remember part of the conversation was, I mean, it was, um, because there were, there were a couple discussions with, um, abandonment of alleys and, um, the, I remember deferring, um, to the previous administration and their thought processes of that, and there was, um, I know a lot of hesitation to, uh, to abandonments that was voiced because of some choices that were made earlier and didn't fare well for the city. And there's the discussions of, you know, trying to predict decisions you make now and how they affect the future. So, I actually, I I mean, I was, I thought we denied it. Um, I don't remember that we tabled it, so, um, but I guess we have to go back and listen to the minutes. And then we did have one property owner who stated that that could be one, the only access that he may have to access a portion of his property.
Well, could I offer a suggestion in this so we don't?
Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't we postpone the decision on this until we can get, uh, some minutes to table it though? I don't. Well, if we untable, we'll bring it back as a resolution, then we have to have the same discussion. Unless you want to, uh, there's two ways. We can get, get, um, an accounting of the minutes and what was discussed, and then decide whether we want to untable it, or we can untable it and wait for the same thing and make a decision, final decision at the, at a, uh, next, at future meeting. Commissioner Sander?
I would vote for, um, finding out the reason why we tabled it first, and then perhaps at the next meeting having a discussion to untable once we have better information on the discussion last time.
Is that a motion?
Uh, absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, commission discussion. Another discussion. Public comment? You have public comments? You have to need to sign and state your name for the record.
My name is Julia Martin, and I own the property in question, so I'd like to explain just this. Would like to address the reason, um, that I understand that it was tabled, and I was told it was tabled when I called after, um, a few meetings, uh, because I hadn't heard anything back. And when I first went in, I was told by the city attorney to just write a letter and commission would bring it up at the next meeting, and I wanted it was time to bring it up. I did not know I was supposed to be here, so I'm embarrassed, but I didn't know that. And I, as I recall, he said, we'll get in touch with you and let you know what we decided, what the commission decided. So, I just thought I'd hear a letter or something to the decision, so I only would have come had I known, um, that I was supposed to be here. So, and to address the other, um, part of it, um, that's why, uh, a year later I decided to bring it up because I can, um, since it was tabled is what the words that were used to me to just, too me to describe it. I thought, okay, then I guess at some future point they were too busy. I'll go back and bring it up again. And the, um, and I didn't know there was any opposition yet. I had no idea. That particular opposition was going into the county, uh, dead, deadline, get, heading into the county, and it hadn't been used for eighty-two years. And I would like to do something with my property. Um, and so that's why I was surprised that it was in opposition. And that person does have two-fold reasons on to their property, uh, both calendar and history. And so, I, and I also, um, would have worked with them to give them a different easement, uh, at a, a different area of my property, but that was, that they have a legal easement to it, but nothing showed up in the title search. So, um, that was the reason this is in light of here.
Just one point of clarification. Have you, have you communicated to that operator owner about your, um, request?
I did, um, in passing, I was intending to go with him along the county line to keep my dog in, and I called her because I'd met her, or I'd met, I believe, the sister of the owner, and, um, I said, come on over and we'll talk about the fence, make sure it's a nice fence, you guys agree with it, since we're sharing the order. And I just mentioned something about I'd like to have that abandoned, um, so I can use that area, and she said, that won't ever happen. So, I didn't know at the time that there was any, uh, opposition to it, and, um, the previous owner, that, that parcel I owned it since two thousand and eleven. We find no, um, access of allowing anyone across it, recorded or even, um, anecdotal or any sort of, um, permission. So, I, and I asked, I talked to several other neighbors, but they don't touch the land, and they haven't had any property.
Is there any other public comment? So, we do have a motion to, uh, for more information requested before we decide on untablement or not. So, that's the motion before us, correct? So, maybe we have roll call please? Yes, that was the second by, by, uh, commission.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or.
Commissioner Sander?
Or.
All right.
Can I make another motion?
I'm the same as you.
Yes, please. I would just like to state a timeframe, if we may.
Oh, that, you don't need a motion for that.
Oh, okay.
What, you will offer a suggestion? No, administration will get to it as quickly as they possibly can.
Let's just tell people maybe we could have it on the July meet, July agenda. Just, I hate to have people waiting and mumbled.
That would have been the result, that take me off the table, that would have been hearing here anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our second discussion item is discuss approved deny the Williams request for a vacation of alley and whether to bring it back as a resolution of intent at the next meeting.
Mr. Woodall, uh, this is another street and alley, uh, vacation request. It is located also on East Lewis Street between M and N Street. The alley and portion of N Street being requested are not built and have not been used as such, and they get in, into the fleshman creek. Thank you very much. And I ask, Mr. Chair, the development review committee looking at this, uh, did recommend approval. They can add, even like to see the reservation of thirty points somewhere in the N Street right away for the potential future, uh, water and sewer mains.
The N Street or the alley?
Yeah, the street. It was convenient to move water across the, serve other development.
Okay, because there is no N Street though, right? Presently, there is no N Street.
There is no N Street, but the right, we, we serve, a portion of that is used other ways.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, um, is there a motion, or do you want to just have some discussion before you know what commission you can debate? Please. Okay, is there any commission discussion? Commissioner Sander?
So, is it to abandon the alley and N Street both?
Yes, the alley in block G, or two, two U, and that portion of N Street, uh, to the east of that block.
Okay, and what's, um, fleshman creek was on the other side there that we can't see?
Yeah, that's near the Girl Scouts. Near the Girl Scout camp.
Oh, okay, we're right across from guys who are streeting through the park in the Girl Scout camp.
Okay. And I guess I, you know, again, um, pertaining to the other discussions we've had with this, um, you know, how the city predicts the future, which they can't do, and whether or not at some point, um, you know, property changes, access is made, you know? Something gets developed. I mean, we see that in my amount of time living in this community, I've seen places developed. I never thought would ever get developed. Um, especially that cul-de-sac down at that end of town, and so just trying to mitigate the risk that the city may have of abandoning future access to potential development. It's just something that I worry about by making these abandonments. And also it provides, um, you know, philosophically, it provides free property to people, uh, that I don't really think is the business of the city is to abandon property and give it to folks. I realize that we'll collect a little bit of tax on it, but it's really not that much. So, um, you know, those are the, um, fundamentals that I struggle with. No personalities or folks aside, I know the people who own this, have this property, they're good people. If they were to ever sell, you know, we don't know what would, somebody may be, you know, develop it differently, um, at some point, so it's, it's just where I struggle with, making these decisions and not knowing the future, so, thank you.
Is there any other commission discussion?
I, well, I just have one question, um, one question, um, do you have development plans yet, or other development plans for?
This, this application is all received.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comments?
But, uh, for some public comment?
Okay. Sure to state your name and address for the record, sign in.
My name is Amber Williams. Thank you for hearing our statement, Zima. Uh, for those of you who may or may not know me, um, I'm a lifelong resident, fifth generation Livingston and Montana. I had the pleasure and, uh, truly blessed to be able to buy that property two years ago. Um, our long-term goal is to allow that to be an animal sanctuary. Right now, uh, we have a small house, uh, a ranch house that was the original homestead in the eighteen nineties that was built on the corner of Lewis and M, and our property runs all the way to the alley of N and O. And so, right now, that N Street is divided, is dividing our meadow in half. And so, I understand long-term range, um, we're concerned about development and that sort of thing. My partner and I, our long-term goal is to keep it as wild as long as we live. Uh, the previous owner, his father bought that property in nineteen thirty-three, which was the same year as my paternal grandmother was born here in right now. I feel that it is our duty to be able to protect this property and prevent any future development in a large-scale fashion. Um, we want to offer an easement for the city to provide utilities in any manner as necessary in long-term time. But we also have access on the alley on the opposite side of that that will still be allowable. We've worked with our, uh, neighbors and our utility providers, um, all preemptively, so that everyone know actively what's, what our plans are, what our desires are. Everyone is signed on and is agreeing that it's a benefit for people. It's a privacy issue for us primarily, because as a legalized street, even though it's undeveloped, any random stranger could walk through my yard, quote-unquote, and I, I have children and nieces and nephews, and I would like to provide some sort of safety in that area, that I don't have to worry about legally allowing strangers to walk onto my property. I, I definitely want to be all-encompassing and as generous and, you know, unassuming as possible. But we, we have no desire to develop anything. The previous property owner was an animal owner, and he actually cut holes into the existing buildings to allow birds and animals to reside in those cables. And so, um, we want to honor his, uh, memory as much as possible to allow the, the tradition and the history, and, um, and the only development we want is to rebuild those buildings, um, and to pay homage to the history that that property is so special to bring to this asset. But if you guys have any questions, comments for us, I'd love to offer any assistance and knowledge.
So, anyone have any, uh, questions for clarification at all?
Um, I don't know perhaps specifically for Amber, but the easement that they are willing to provide, what would we use that for if there's no development?
Uh, we're looking at potential cross the creek in the future, uh, perhaps water movers or required sewer service.
Uh-huh. So, would that easement go completely across the creek, or?
It would go to the end of the, where N Street is flat, which was the, I remember, fifth year, nineteen forty-seven, high water mark. So, it's, it's straight completely in somewhere before the creek, but it's all the city currently has to reserve now.
So, if the city's thinking futurably about, okay, this would be appealing to have an easement for development, what about access then if that were to get developed? Where does that come into play?
The access?
Besides the utility access, natural, uh, people access?
The utilities, it would normally be just that access to utilities, to, or maintenance, access to repair.
But if you have an idea of maybe in the future an area could be developed, I'm trying to understand then, okay, we got a way to get the sewer and water there and electricity, but how about getting the people there?
Well, we've already got access via each street to the other side of the creek. As this, uh, property owners stated, you've got access to their east, the alley, the N block. N Street, those street, those rights of water are still there.
Okay.
Could be developed, bridged, et cetera.
We don't have a map of that, do we?
There are several available full-width rights of water that could be developed to access across the creek.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
Yes.
My name's George Warren. I'm a mansurator that, I've been working with Amber and Dave on, uh, this project surveying their property. I was also friend of Ray Toss the Burnet, who owned the property for, uh, a long time, before, um, Amber and Dave bought it, and this was originally the, uh, true boot creamry property. It was kind of, um, it doesn't have a historic, um, designation, but it is kind of a historic property. This is creamery and dairy for many years as part of the Livingston, Livingston history. But, um, Amber and Dave have been, uh, you know, as far as the maintaining of that, uh, right-way, existing right-way, they've been taking care of it, and Ray Toss the Burnet before that for, fifty years was taking care of that, that street right-way to, with his, his efforts and money maintaining it. And we did a contact with utility providers that could use the alley, Northwest Energy, et cetera. And they agreed to, uh, the vacation of both the, uh, street and the alley as long as, uh, the easement is provided for them as well too.
As a side note, my grandfather used to run cattle with that creamery, you know, wholesale ranch, uh, and he, um, that idea.
Can we, could you get that map up there again? I don't, I'm, I guess I want some clarification. You said that this, the street, this N Street flat of that goes through the middle of your property?
Yes, sir.
So, you own property on both sides?
Yes, sir. We own all the way to the alley of, uh.
So, you own the alley?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so why are we vacating the alley then?
The alley in between M and N is the alley that will be vacated. The alley in between N and O, they can't see the picture. They own all of this, yes. It's not quite where it looks. So, our property goes from here all the way over to here. And currently, we have a wall tank, but we've used something for years and years, which is for camping now in town. And I have, uh, a small little barbecue here, and we planted a couple of cherry trees, and we want to rebuild the old dairy, um, barn and, or and then this is the existing homestead that was originally, uh, built in the eighteen nineties. And so, that will be our permanent residence, and we want to restructure the outbuildings and create this to be the wildlife easement to allow, uh, creatures to live and exist along the fleshman creek outside of all the development that's happening around it.
Right, right, too. If I drove down there, and I, I must have been at the wrong alley or something. Does your alley at Lewis Street have a, have a gate?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, so the alley's already blocked. So, so the, so that, but you don't own the property at the corner of Cameron Lewis?
Yes, sir, I, I, we, we own all of this.
Oh.
And so, our gate for access, we, we bring in, this is where our garden is, this is how we bring in our, our mulch and sawdust, and then, um, I have a driveway that comes through here. And so, we bring in like campers and stuff that just needs to be drive here, and then this is where the, we recently had our gas line re-done. And so, the utility company came in and tore it all up, and previously it was a bunch of grass, but when we came in and we did the utility, it made it look much more like an alley, whereas previously it did not look like an alley.
Got a, a full-size flat here, which we helped the commission.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, I guess I was a little confused when I go by there and look at it. Uh, seems like there's a lot of homes on N Street on that side, a lot of houses, it was at the wrong spot?
No, sir, there's a fresh garden. No, sir. There's a fresh garden. We just, the giant deer fence up right here. It's in the same location that Ray Tosh, the owner, used to have in the seventies. If you look up the Historical Society photos, you'll see him with the same.
Mine's at the bottom.
Um there's a trailer house here.
Oh, okay.
And then Kathy and Eric have that new house that was just built on like six, seven years ago, I believe.
And that's your property as well?
No, we do not own this.
Oh, that's how when you're moving your hand, you went over there.
Sorry.
This is Eric. I can't read it very well, man, but just skip the other's name.
Shannon Monroe has a a small house here.
Okay, all right.
This is a large, modern structure.
Because right now what I saw there is a gate and if you look down the alley, there's a fence. You're, if you're on Lewis Street and you look at the alley, there's a gate there.
Yes, that's a new, that's a new cattle gate that we recently
And then at the end of the alley, there's a fence.
Oh, this would be Shannon Monroe's fence that's already blocking.
Yeah, okay.
And it's gated.
Tricia, you really want to say something here? You better get up here.
Okay.
I do.
I don't know if all the commissioners were able to go down there and see that property. Were you all able to look it up or? My name is, but I I I uh I think about sixteen years ago, I think when um Commissioner Schwartz and I run the Historic Preservation Commission and we were doing the Historic District Walking Tour. We went down to that property and I have a very good tape recording of I never could say his name, Mr. Tosh, the bar. And he's an amazing human being. He is a well-renowned statewide environmentalist. He um I I was, I couldn't believe my interview with him. But when we say that property has not been uh recorded in as a historic spot, it actually has. It is on our Historic District Walking Tour of Livingston, Montana. Um that uh Trebridge Dairy also um there's a wonderful video. It's available nationally with him being interviewed as well. He's the, he was one of the environmentalists, for example, who opposed the Big Sky development. Um he is recognized um as well in um that property is, as you know, is just beautiful, huge trees. And at the time, so long ago, we dreamed of just what these new owners are are talking about. We're so thrilled to hear from them that they, in fact, can value something as important historically as we have in the Trebridge Dairy and are willing to save it and preserve it for the future. It's seldom that you have something as beautiful as that right nestled in your own community. And so its value is is in its history. Its value is in its beauty. Its value is in the remarkable people who have owned that property. And I I I think that short of an easement, I think that is really wise to allow for this property to ma- maintain its integrity um as as a whole. And in the future, for us to take a serious look at supporting the efforts of these people in making something significant out of that remarkable piece of land. Because it would be, it would be a sad day if any of that um integrity that exists right now would be compromised in any way. So I just want to say that it has been um, it has been um, it has been recognized that the Trebridge Dairy has been recognized. Uh Ray has been recognized on a national level. He has been recognized in several videos by environmental activists. And I just think I commend that these, the people are doing and the integrity of this property, I think, is very important and it'd be wonderful for the city to be what however supportive they can of maintenance of the Trebridge Dairy property. And I'll bring you a copy of that Historic District Walking Tour so you can see what was said about it. Put them in covers since about sixteen years ago. Thank you very much.
Okay, of course. Uh also, I just wanted to say, well, actually I get to meet Ray in the last couple of years too when I'm on the uh our Chinese museum board, the Gabe and I did a four ocean screen interview with Ray seeing for uh archiving at the Yellowstone Naval Exam. But uh also on the other side of the creek, really the only property on the side of the creek is the Treasure State Real Scout Camp. Uh Mayor's name, city, city property and the golf course. And of course, the Geiger Trail Park, which has direct access off in the Geiger Street. Anybody like this people you discovered? Where's your map that shows the uh? This shows the whole property that the um yeah. There. Okay. I'm seeing it on like this. There's a fence. This is the fence right on here. And they're not asking for the shall be vacant and thought that, you know, the city wanted some kind of a pedestrian access. Here is still there.
And is the request?
Yeah, and um the other property owners have all the pieces. So the red and yellow street. So you sound like you'd hack that out. Well, there had been, you know, some approaching in there.
Isn't this a house that's stand undone for quite a long time? Yeah, okay. When I look down the alley.
Yeah, and it doesn't, yeah, you can see right there. Yeah, I think it's uh, it's not developed. Uh no, that is uh, that would be, that would be actually, yeah. The Williams property includes and to the creek and is uh the next step in this process of the commission agreement. Uh vacation in street alley, the next thing would be a quiet title action to deserve property on the creek here. This sign here represents the original um city, city boundary where the Yellow Scout Group was. Because, you know, the sub-pushing creek was actually a channel of the Yellow Scout Group. It's uh represents the actual channel, so uh really waiting for this property owners here actually have to this sign here.
We are having commission discussion over here, so if anyone wants to come and listen. And you should probably bring the recording over or something.
I apologize.
Uh so what all the question I have is uh these, these are already, these are here. I mean, they're flat in America, obviously, these are just a field right now, right? This is around, and this block, this is between Williams property and someone else's property?
Right.
So
And this would actually paint stuff across here as well.
So, you know, I, you know, I I share some of a reservation about um abandoning to cause we know, the future or some of these things are valuable. But if you own this property and you have this street there a whole time, you bought the street already there. The street was in the end, you're going through the middle of the property. Or I'll be up all the way there.
For attention.
For attention. So um where do, where do the sewer and water lines end on the street? On N Street, it would come all the way down there? And if it was all the way like towards that? Oh, it does, it's a loop. It's all through the county. And how about down here, goes down here and that's into the park? This one's like this.
Yeah. Yeah, I want my dog back.
And then just reach around the front part of this.
You know.
So this is, this is a fence, I'm sorry. This is a fence here too?
This is, this is a fence. Right, right. This, there's a, it's the top of a, right there, so right here is where it's uh and it probably has been at historic, getting a lot of grass put up here and everything, you know, but yeah, the channel from that through here and uh and it drops off here down to the western regions, yeah.
Now, I'm sure you remember years ago, Ray actually had all of this walked off. He had touched this, came all the way down. And we were taking, we tried to look, uh look into the exam here. And I spilled some toast. They're talking to me, my doctor was working that, it was all there.
Well, so so that your property goes the other side?
It doesn't, no, sir. When when freshman creek came through, it was historically when the dairy and when Ray's father was on the that was all by the
And just like many of the property owners for the rough western feet. A lot of property owners have been quite hightacked because there's um you know, the city first, that it ruined the federal government first. That the land, the original owners, they patented the high-water mark. And the state of Montana will be produced to the low-water mark of the Apple. So there's kind of a, there was no man between the low-water mark and the high-water mark. So a lot of landowners, and then since uh this uh artificial expulsion, let's say, because, you know, the river went through here. Uh city go the uh dike at the uh west end of Secretary Park. So when they put the dike there, stopped the river from flowing through here. Um, you know, and uh it's it's probably more than the commission wants to hear right now. It's a, it's a complicated story, but
Yeah, all we need to do is hear about this.
So many owners are quite hightacked between the centerline, the creek, and the water body. And it's partly now, it's sort of just planned and banned, you know, that's So uh yeah, most names are quite entitled on your box.
Okay, well, why don't we uh see where?
I just wanted to mention that we also celebrated Ray at the cemetery walk. I'd love to send the commissioners the script of the person who personified Ray. Quite a remarkable story he has to tell.
So at this point, um does the commission want to make a motion to move this forward or not? Is there a motion? I could say something.
Absolutely.
Not before.
I mean, the intentions are great and I understand that for for you. What they're doing, um but it's the next owner. I mean, is there any way to, like conservation easement and there's something, you know, like that's the only thing, you know, that I look at. And I'm, yeah. It's a thought.
All right, so there is no motion? Um can I just, uh historically, we have so many of these places around town. What were they? I mean, it sounds like especially like with this one, that there was really never any access to the public. It's plotted, but um the public didn't use it. So I'm just trying to understand historically, um the terminology I want to use. Unless there's a request given, the city just chooses not to look at such things or?
What's your question?
Um, the, how the city continue, has navigable land all over town that it doesn't take care of or use?
What's the question? Did there was that a statement?
Um my question was historically, why? If anyone knows the answer to that.
Mr. Woodall? There's the last twenty-five years that have been involved. Uh there's only two ways that those seats come before. Either requested for abandonment or the requested for improvement. And if neither of those happen, they align on
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to uh move this to resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Schwartz. Second, second by Commissioner Freeman. The other discussion? The other public discussion? Okay. Woodall?
Chair President?
No.
Commissioner Freeman?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or.
Commissioner Xander?
Or. Motion fails. So this will not be coming back as a resolution at this time. All right, so um Action nine MC, URA, RAP, CRO, or City CIP funding. Mr. Woodall?
Mr. Woodall?
Yes, Mr. Woodall. This was on the previous agenda of the other group of grant applications. Of twenty years and the city manager discussed the explanation that this is still by the parts of the upcoming project. Although, all you have to do now is do an asset application. Was worth one hundred thousand dollars. And the city manager determined that ninety thousand is the maximum we needed to make the capital program. So this request is for that provision of ninety thousand.
All right. So there is any, is there a motion or is there any request for clarification?
Make a motion to approve URA grant approval for the CIP funding.
Motion by Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any clarification from the commission at all? Is there any public comment? Right, ballot.
Chair person?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedman?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner Sandberg?
Against.
Motion passes. Okay, so now we have some through the agenda. Do, as I can city measure, city manager, if you have any any comments? Okay, commission comments, Commissioner Sandberg?
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz? If I could correct a question to Mr. Holmes. Shannon. I just noticed a pile of limb debris still on five hundred block of West Lewis. I I don't see any, any other where, anywhere else. It's just one wire.
I
Are we still picking up piles?
No. No, we've I made a decision to go back to normal duties of mowing grass and maintaining the pool and splash park and cemetery doing street improvements like puddle patching. So we're trying to catch up from very stormy spring cleanup and getting in the storm. So we have intentions of getting back to do it. You know, we, we get calls all the time in public works. We, we, you know, we strongly encourage if people have the means, being able to deliver those street charges, the transportation, do that. But, but we're gonna do another citywide effort here at some point.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's, that's all.
Yeah. The only couple of things I took note of when I was driving down the area to look at the property for Act Number B was there's a storage container on Lewis Street between O and P. Do we allow storage containers on the street? O and P, storage container. All right. And then, what is that cul-de-sac property down there at the end of Lewis? Yeah, I saw about ten goats in the field there. Not, is that? Do we, do, are we okay with goats running wild in Lewis? On that side of the tree? Yeah. There are a lot of goats. I've never seen their baby goats. They're about this tall.
Really?
They're wild goats. I think, I thought it was goat hunting season or something. Oh, yes, of course, Mr. Friedman.
I think it's type of things we're discussing with this property. Would be nice to have a meeting with the commission. I certainly acknowledge what we're talking about. So we're all looking at the same thing. You know, we're sure to say a lot of times, we're all exactly what we're looking at. Because we've had several of these things to look at a man, to understand what was going on. Pretty tough. There's a lot of history, there's a lot of information, and we don't have to really make a tough decision. So we've had several of these. I've never felt, you know, I'd go out to take a look at it, which would be very uncomfortable to which we're looking at. So I think in the future, we're gonna have a real really good look at it, you know, one time, all together. You know, it might be sort of, yeah, really unstruck it. So when we're talking about
That's the way that moved it to a resolution to just time to do that. But that's mainly
So Commissioner Stone?
Charles Spencer. It just sounds like yeah.
Looks like you're really hard to too. Stand up. As well as
All right, is there any public comments? Is there other comments for the seniors? Ladies first? Thank you. You're handling that first point and state your name and address for the record. You go far aside and say John, this is right again.
I'm Julie Barton, and at sixteen oh one East Louis. And I did just want to put a dose into the cleanup crews because I appreciate them very much. It's, that last storm was unbelievable, of course, and to Chin and and Public Works that, that was something that it was so wonderful when they came around and did that. Wonderful help. So we, I, I took five loads just from my property from trailer and truck pull. And then they cleaned up the neighbors and what was left over. And it was one load. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I appreciate the idea of coming. Thank you very much.
So they, sign the thing and state your name. I heard you one at a time. One really fast. You don't have to do it at the same time. I just can't handle it. Typical dude. No, no multitasking. Yeah, please. Okay.
Hello, everyone. Bill Wetkin. Recently moved here from Los Angeles, I mean, Los Angeles, California. Really happy to be here. It's just a dream come true, at least for the last two years of the dream coming somewhere like, like this. Thank you so much. Too late to stop the railroad from coming through town, making a bunch of noise. That's, that's gonna be really tough to do anything there. Just my joke. But street, sidewalk maintenance is something I've done a lot of volunteer work in Los Angeles. I lost the battle. I was gonna run for mayor over there until November one and then decided to move here. It was one or the other. Fix the place or leave. And I decided to leave. And for England someday, where my heritage is from as a writer. But coming here, I thought of different things. Surrendering prayer talks about things you can control, things you can't control. I, I walk down the sidewalks, these, these beautiful, this beautiful town. There are cigarette butts in the sidewalks and trash. It's very controllable. It's very doable. Don't know what's in place. I'm asking sort of casually at this point for a bib, a broom, and a dustpan. And I pledge at least four hours a week. I like a Sunday, ten AM to two PM. The bars are kind of swinging and I'm fifteen years sober. It's kind of a good place for me to be anyway. It's just kind of interesting at the least. But I'm very, would love to, to put, when I'm not writing, I like to really work. And I'd love to do some sweeping for you guys if no one else is doing that. Just, just ask that, and I'm asking maybe that, again, someone tracks down a bid for me and make me save. And I'm happy to sweep up some butts. I'm doing it anyways with my hands and that's kind of gross. I'm trying to upgrade. That's, that's really it. Really grateful to be here and I'll drop some cards off. There were some tragedies last year I heard about, young people. I'm formerly suicidal, depressed, fifteen years sober alcoholic. Do a humble ministry online. And I want to raise my hand to that anytime, anywhere. I've traveled cross-country to, to do this type of thing, help people and on Greyhound, three-day trips, just to help people I love them. So I'm ready to help in those areas. And you might see me at the high school doing some sipping and coaching volleyball. They take me as I try to sell books. No one buys them yet. So gotta do some other things. Thank you so much. So, so nice to be here. Thank you.
If I may offer suggestions, talk with our administration about sweeping, picking up. I don't know if there's any prohibition for just doing it. I don't think there is. But if you wanted to be official or something like that, talk to our public works.
You got a bib?
Yep.
You got a bib?
I have safety vests. We have proper gloves. We have it all.
That's very good, man.
Appreciate it. Awesome. Thanks so much.
Welcome to the list, mate.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other public comment?
Chief, if you may, let me point out this County Street. First, I'd like to make a comment and then I'd like to ask a question. This is a comment question. I want to say for the first time since I've been here, I, I appreciate our new city manager what's happening with this town because downtown, the streets are getting cleaned. Wonderfully clean edges. So first time in front of my building that I have had the streets re-become the day they were remixed, said they were getting found. And actually, the first time in the eighteen years I've had the gray boats that I've had that street in front of my building swept correctly. And I put signs out and don't, don't park here or we'll get you. But I just, I want to make a comment on it. Thank you so much. Now, the question I have is, we we, we were planning to do County Street and Main Street to this two hundred feet, the shirt of Lewis. And it was to be in this budget coming out the first of July, the July budget, right? Is it, is the nine hundred thousand dollars in that budget? Maybe Shannon could answer that.
Yes, absolutely.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Welcome. Is there any other public comment? Is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Oh, we are.
It's all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so just meeting the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven forty-nine.
Yes.
Yeah, so when would we start? Well, we're gonna probably advertise it in September.
Thank you.
Give it up for them to
I've assumed you know, we have to communicate with very
Oh, it's, you guys are hiding in the dark.
I'm after you. Probably see drunk.
Nine sixty thousand.
Really tired already.
Those are the other Well, it's been early enough for